Okay, welcome everyone to a regular meeting of the Norwich Planning Commission. Jan Lausbrunner, the Chair, we have a quorum, so I would take a motion on the agenda, please.
Prove your proof.
Have a second?
Second.
Mary, thank you. Any discussion on the agenda, which you can see is a special occasion this week, so it's a single item agenda. Can we just move the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's, that's the agenda. Do we need, do we need to do anything for the Affordable Housing Subcommittee? Do you have a warned meeting that needs to be started or anything? Okay. Okay, well then, as people have seen on the agenda, this is a special meeting where we welcome our Regional Commission. And I know Brian's on the phone, so we have, Brian is the, our Norwich's Commissioner and Stephen is the alternate. And this is with the Planning Commission and is the initial kickoff meeting for the new regional, the new regional plan, land use maps. And you guys have done this in multiple towns before us, so at this point, I'll hand it over to you and I'll play traffic cop as needed and, and ask my own questions when the time comes up. So, take over.
Excellent. Thank you, Jan. And thank everyone for wanting to speak here this evening. Stephen, I'm just gonna share up my screen, we have a PowerPoint. Slideshow. Okay, looks like.
Yep.
There we are. Okay, so can everyone on Zoom see the slideshow?
Yes.
Great, and just make sure everyone can hear me. So, my name is Al Katz, I'm a Regional Planner with the Ture River Zotticu Regional Commission, and with me today, and I'm Kyle Hansen, I'm a planner at Ture River Zotticu Regional Commission. And so we're here to discuss the changes in state law that happened last year around Act 250 and housing, and how that resulted, or has resulted in changes to the regional future land use mapping, and the intersection of this with, with town planning and Act 250. So. Just a brief, briefly go over the through a short PowerPoint, I expect it to take about twenty, twenty-five minutes. Please feel free to chime in with questions as we go along. Sometimes it's easier as we're on a slide to address questions as, as we go. But we'll essentially go over the timeline, and some of the key changes are taking place with the regional feature land use maps and the, the land use areas. And then we will also touch on housing and the new state and regional housing targets. And then we brought draft maps. And so we'll dive into those after the presentation, and we'll go over, we brought a comparison, the current future regional, future land use map and the draft, so we can, we can compare it, we can answer questions then as well. So just a brief overview of the timeline, we started this process back in, in February with outreach to towns. And we're meeting with towns up through October, so we've met with about twenty-six, twenty-seven towns so far. Just having this very meeting discussing the draft maps for each town. We expect in January that the board will begin reviewing the regional land use maps. And that will extend through March. We expect to have hearing drafts ready by June and go to adoption in December of twenty-twenty-six. So, it's quite a long timeline, but we're getting through it.
Sure. So just a brief intro to what we're looking at here, because this is, you know, regional level planning, we're looking at how everything works together when it comes to future land use mapping and planning for all thirty towns in the Two Rivers region. And then as a state, as a whole, once all the regional planning commissions finish this update and then all come back together. So planning isn't always local control up or top down, it's a mix depending on what you're working on. And then, of course, regional planning extends beyond town boundaries. So when we're looking at these maps, we're gonna see on a town by town level, there's gonna be interesting little corners of one color or another that on a town level plan, you would just smooth over, it wouldn't be significant enough to be its own area. But on regional level planning, we're looking at, yeah, rivers, wetlands, watersheds, ridgelines, roadways, other infrastructure, and natural resources and significant natural connectors and forest blocks and stuff like that. So the areas will make more sense on a regional scale if it looks a little weird on the border of a town when we're just looking at Norwich. There's a couple of state planning goals that we have to follow when we are making these regional future land use maps. We have to consider the the use of resources and the consequences of growth and development for the region and the state as a whole, as well as in the community in which it takes place. So we're meeting with all thirty towns in our region to show this proposed draft map and to get your feedback. Just to have that interaction with the community to make sure that we're not making a map without any, any feedback. We also need to make sure that these plans maintain the historic settlement pattern of these compact village and downtown centers that are surrounded by rural countryside. So we wanna make sure that our villages have the ability to grow, but not in a way that's detrimental to natural resources, to the long-term viability of agriculture and forest lands, which the long-term viability of those resources should be also encouraged through our plan. And then maintaining low overall density in the rural areas. So that all being said, when we're looking at our current regional plan, future land use map and the proposed updated regional feature land use map, we're gonna see our village and settlement areas becoming slightly larger, in, in most cases, not always. And the rural conservation area, which was our green area on the map, will be a little smaller. And that's because through Act 21, the state introduced, you know, three rural areas that every regional planning commission has to include in their, you know, all of our regional future land use maps. So we'll have rural general and the rural conservation, but in between, we're gonna have a rural agriculture and forestry area, which I'll talk about a little bit more later. And then, yes, the mapping of these new rural areas won't impact single-family dwellings or home occupations in Act 250, you know, towns that have their own zoning ordinances, the small-scale development won't be impacted by this, this is the future land use map, so it's an Act 250 map, basically.
Great, so just to go over a, a breakdown of what some of these new regional future land use areas are on the left side, are the, what we term the core settlement areas. From, from typically the densest to, to less dense. So in the top left-hand, or it's a, we're looking at downtown center, that's our most urban environments, we have most infrastructure services, highest population. So for our region, that would be Hartford and Randolph. Typically downtown centers are surrounded by other dense land use areas as well. Slightly smaller than that, but it's still a, a more compact center as a village center. Now each town will have at least one village center. Based on the changes in state law, all of the village center designations will become village centers as part of the future land use mapping. But there might also be additional village centers created or, or maintained that are not part of that village center designation process. And we'll have an example of, of a difference between those two later in the slideshow. Then we have, in conjunction with downtown centers and village centers, village areas. Now, not all towns will have these because there are certain statutory requirements such as having zoning and subdivision and suitable water, wastewater infrastructure. But Norwich in particular will have a village area. And then the smallest clustering of, of development is what we term a hamlet. Now that's not an area per se, that's a, a point on the map, and we won't look at that too closely because we don't have one map for Norwich, but it's possible that, that a hamlet could be identified maybe in, in West Norwich. If that's of interest. And that's just a call out essentially, it's saying this is an area where there's a, there was a historic clustering of development on a crossroads and might in the future become denser or may not.
So, so in Norwich, you said everybody has to have a village center. So our downtown is the village center. And just wanna clarify, do we have village area?
Yes.
Yes. And what is that?
So, so in the draft map, we've mapped the village area, and that tends to be more residential. It's
Downtown?
So the, the down, kind of the main street of Norwich, where you have more businesses and shops and things like that, more mixed use, that would be the village center. The village area leans more heavily toward the residential. It's not saying that there aren't businesses, but it tends to be within walking distance of that village center. And you have a denser pattern of development already, and, and there could potentially be more development, specifically housing.
Because towns to have village areas need to have, you know, zoning and subdivision at least, and then, you know, municipal water system or public water system of some capacity and then suitable soils for septic, if there isn't a, a town wastewater system.
On the right-hand side, again, going to densest to least dense, we have the three rural areas that Kyle touched on in the previous slide. So the rural general, it's virtually the same as what we have in our current regional plan. The rural general area, that is our most residential rural area. It tends to be a mix of of single-family homes, other residential, you will still probably have some farmland and forest land, but it's already heavily fragmented and likely going to be more so in the future. It's typically by closer to main roads where you have access to to, to roads and easy access to other areas of commerce or business. The rural agriculture and forestry area tends to be a, a middle area between that rural general rural conservation where you have a mix of working lands. So you have farm and, and forest land. And the parcels tend to be much larger, less fragmented. You still will have some residential, but a, the more predominant use is those working lands. And then that rural conservation area, that tends to be the, the most remote, the least accessible and the least developed. It's often conserved. But not always. It could, it generally includes highest priority forest blocks, habitat connectors, area, these more remote areas that are, are pivotal, pivotable, or pivotal wildlife areas that, that cross town boundaries, and they may or may not have road access.
I can take this. This is just a little example of, of a, that's not any town or anything, just the colors on the, the screen kinda show you how this process works with making this new third in-between world area. So right now, this is kind of how our regional plan, future land use map looks. We have the green area, which is the forest-based resource conservation area. We have rural general, the white in the middle, the little orange quadrilaterals in the middle represent our villages. And then these new blue areas is the, the rural agriculture and forestry area. And it takes a little bit from the forest-based resource and a little bit from rural general, again predominantly the working lands, the larger residential lots or small residential lots that are surrounded by farms will also be included into that area. And then the forest-based resource area will be renamed to the rural conservation area, and that's just the naming convention laid out in Act 21 that all RPCs have to follow. And then the policies will remain largely the same between the rural conservation and the forest-based resource between the rural and the new rural general, and then the forestry will kinda take a little from both the rural areas.
So some of the considerations in determining the rural areas, and I've, I mentioned these in that previous slide, but really looking at the parcel size and existing forest land and large parcels, so doing, both looking at the satellite imagery, but also existing land cover data, data that, that shows where land's in current use for farming. Or land is conserved. And you know, basically assessing and then also looking at, at the parcel data to see, oh, is this owned by a logging company, for example? Who, who is the owner here? And then also taking into consideration those priority and high priority forest blocks and, and weighing all of these as considerations when determining which of the rural future land use areas certain parcels would, would end up in. Large wetlands are also considered, but we don't have very many of those in our region. It's more of a consideration in, Western Vermont, the, the Rutland area. But where there are, where is, there is a presence of, of large weapons in conjunction with, with other considerations that do play a role.
So when looking at the village areas, just take a turn from the rural up on the screen, we're using Chelsea as our example because Chelsea was the first town we presented. And they were gracious enough to let us use their example moving forward. We started out looking at the flood-prone areas and, and wetlands, so river corridors and flood hazard areas. We also looked at steep slopes, so anything above a thirty-five percent slope is probably in most cases too steep for development. We also looked at existing infrastructure, so if there's water, municipal sewer, Chelsea has both. And then if there is no municipal sewer, looking at the soil data, to make sure that the soils are adequate for you know, set, individual septic systems on a denser village scale. And in Chelsea's case, it's really tricky because they're a really narrow valley with steep slopes, they have the floodplain river corridor running right through. But because they have the, the water and wastewater, they could fit a higher density of of new development at that five units per acre versus more of a half or two units per acre, for example. So that all kinda comes together when we look at all of our towns. And on the left is the, the way that Chelsea Village looks in our current regional plan, future land use map. It's that kinda salmon color, and then the golden core of that color is the existing state designation for Chelsea Village. And on the right, we have the proposed village center for, for Chelsea that kind of expands a little bit to fill in the gaps between the steep slopes and the floodplain while maintaining the existing village that's already on the river. But again, when we're looking at housing and potential for housing infill, we're not looking at the river corridor, we're looking at the, the lands in between the steep slopes and that river corridor. So it grows kinda width-wise, but we didn't have to draw it much more north and south. We could fill in, in the gaps because of the density that's allowed. And then also the Vermont State Village Designation Program is, is going away and is being replaced by this. So everything within that new darker red area on the right will be covered by the state village designation program.
So that's a, you show it as a village area. Can you say why that's a village area and not a village center?
Sorry, it, it is the village center.
It is the village there. That was
Is there, is there no village area in addition to the center there?
So Chelsea meets most of their requirements for village area, but they don't have town subdivision bylaws. So because they don't have subdivision, by statute, we, they can't have a village area, but they were so close. And in the future, if a town were to adopt subdivision, if it was really soon, we could draw them a village area. If it is within the next eight years, it'll get drawn in for the next update.
So using this example, Chelsea has almost no development potential. I'm looking at the whole town.
Well,
It's a very thin So what, what I'm hearing you say is that the regional plan suggests Chelsea has almost no development potential.
For, for what sort of development?
Housing.
Well, so
Very narrow, very narrow
Right.
And a lot of conflicts given regulatory issues. So this very narrow portion of a very big town has almost no development potential. That's, that's what I am seeing in the graphics you're presenting. I'm not saying good or bad, that's what I'm seeing.
This is ju, I mean, we're just focused on, on the village. Yeah. And that's not to say development can't happen elsewhere, it's just looking at the state planning goals and concentrating development in village centers, that's what we're looking at. And so it's actually with the expansion, and in most towns, the village centers are getting bigger, and this can accommodate not just housing, but more commercial and, and other types of development, too.
And then Chelsea example, the Beacon Hill side of the town is out of the floodplain, out of the river corridor, and that's a, that's what we were looking at as an example for potential for
I understand, that's a teeny, weedy, super teeny, weedy, weedy, weedy part of this whole concept.
And so can you speak for a minute? You said that these land use designations categories are for Act 250 purposes. So really, every, the distinctions between these areas may make it easier to get a development project through Act 250. Other than that, that's, that's what we're talking about here. Other than that, it's loan, zoning, regular zoning and, and all the other constraints. Is, is that true? We're, we're talking about potentially making Act 250, a few criteria of Act 250 not apply for housing within certain land use areas, right?
It's, yeah, it's, it's correct in that this would only apply in, in Act 250. But yeah, so the
Hey Jan, a, a quick point though, no zoning threshold criterion for, for Act 250, housing density is six units with zoning is nine. So that's the only distinction we're talking about here.
The other difference, if I understand it, is that under the state designation program, they now have a somewhat larger area that will qualify for, you know, priority for affordable housing funding, priority for state infrastructure funding and other benefits of the designation program. So I, I think it's important to remember, right? There's both the Act 250 thing and there's also the state designation, and both of them being, as I understand it, are being affected, right, by the designations that you create?
Yeah, Jeff, so the point of order in, in different senses, if the state is saying, if you don't have zoning, you can't have affordable housing, I don't think that's what our goal is.
Yeah, I, I, I'm with you on that. I, I'm just trying to understand the significance, I'm trying to explain the significance of, of, as I understand it, at least of designating an area as village as opposed to not. But maybe we should save our, our, our drilling down to actually get to Norwich, right? Rather than talking about Chelsea so much.
Let's, let's do that. But I, but I agree that what will be helpful for everyone, certainly for me, will just be to understand how the land use maps influence what projects can happen where, and which rules they affect. But yeah, let's, let's continue and then we'll, we'll drill down when we get to Norwich.
Okay, so this is the, the housing targets. This is a state also, in addition to Act 21, has given every regional planning commission a regional housing target. That's our starting line. So Ture River Zotticu, our regional housing target is a little more than thirty-six hundred units by twenty-third, for the entire region of thirty towns. And so the state planning goals, I mean, these villages that we're drawing should be planned to accommodate a substantial majority of, of housing needed to reach the housing targets developed for each region. And then, so we took this regional housing target and then disaggregated them across all the towns in our region using, you know, we started out by saying, we're looking at all thirty towns together, what's our population? So for example, Hartford has roughly twenty percent of the region's population. They started with roughly twenty percent the housing target. If a town has both water or municipal water or sewer, if not both, and a highway exit. So the commuter potential plus the density, the increased density capability, the town would gain fifteen percent above that proportional number. The town had neither of those things, so we're a more rural town than it would have. Good, see reduction in that housing target by thirty percent. That way, we're trying to allow the towns with the potential for higher density to have a higher housing target as well as the commuter potential. If a town had a highway exit but no municipal services, it'll just break even at that proportional number. And it was the fifteen up, the thirty down, and the zero that kept the number at that thirty-six hundred. If we increased it, the same as we decreased it, we would have a massively high housing target above what the state gave us, just because of Hartford, when you start multiplying their housing target by larger numbers, it just skews the, the overall regional housing target.
How, how did they come up with, and I know it's a long answer, but in a nutshell, how did they come up with thirty-six hundred for our regions? Was that a kind of mathematical calculation around what we currently have, or how did that number, how, because that's, that's the foundational number for the region?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to remember. I, I don't recall off the top of my head. But I, I think it mainly takes into account demographic drift, homelessness, it's not accounting for, at least the twenty, thirty target is not accounting for in migration necessarily.
But does it talk about the, the landscape, or it was just, it's sort of a goal, we wanna have many more things as opposed to what's?
It's a
I, I can help Kyle. Kyle, I asked Peter and Kevin the, the exact same question when I spoke to them about a month ago. And they said, what you said around demographic drift and gave more detail about that. So what that term means is what are the households? What, what happens with household size that then creates a housing need? And, and I was surprised to hear various figures about household size, you know, Woodstock has this huge portion of single people, you know, one-person households, and the number of, of households that are either one or two people in Vermont is, is, you know, is much greater than a majority. And so just that demographic drift drives the need for more housing units. And it's, it's that plus, you know, relatively minor changes, it doesn't, to what Kyle said, it doesn't take into account oh, more people want to move here for jobs or for specific employment numbers. And so it's, it's actually a low end of the need, but it very much speaks to the type of housing, the size of the units. If we're making this target primarily because we have smaller households, We we got to make sure the we're encouraging the right kind of units.
Thank you.
And uh. This is all being said, when we're looking at Norwich's housing target. Uh, we're looking at two hundred and seventy units townwide. Norwich is our very largest town by population. And then you have the municipal water and the the highway access. Uh, which that's roughly about seven point four percent of the regional target, so. Uh, that's by twenty thirty, so in order to base all we were asking of the states. Putting forward with this plan is to to plan for the uh possibility that these units be built, right? We don't, we're not gonna come at you at twenty thirty and say, how many housing units have you built? And then if they're not built, not, we're not gonna. You know, penalize you, but we have to make sure we can plan for the um possibility of them being built in order to meet this housing.
And and specifically a substantial majority within village centers, village areas, so. From Norwich, that would be sixty percent.
Sixty percent in the transition, the village area and the village center.
Um, and with that, I mean, we can take a look at the maps. And look at those future land use areas, go into more detail.
Um, so when it says two hundred and seventy units and and I understand this is, uh, you know, there's a. Uh, you're you're not able to require this. This is this is somewhat similar. To some of the discussions we had around solar uh P V targets. Where there's a statewide goal that turns into regional goals that turn that get allocated by the town. And then uh various uh encouragements and incentives and and. Methods to make it likely to happen. Um, but uh it's not, uh, there's not that much of a stick. It's more of some carrots, but does it? Is there a distinction made when you say units, two hundred and seventy units? Clearly, if it's because of demographic drift and smaller household sizes, then. To meet the need, we would be better off with uh A D U's and duplexes and smaller houses and and multi. The multi-unit things, um, that would meet the need. If if we put in two hundred and seventy large, single-family homes. That would uh be a totally different type of development. It wouldn't meet the need the same way.
That's why we say units, because it can be an A D U, it can be a duplex, it could be two units, it could be a multi-family, it could be apartments. There's many different ways to to reach and plan for that number that isn't just single-family homes.
Yeah, and we're we're not doing a a fine-grained analysis here. We're just saying, okay. On a half an acre, you can have a unit. But maybe there are some constraints we don't know about. So let's say. An acre, because for some areas that we're looking at in the core settlements. It it may not be feasible, you know, we we can't do a fine-grained analysis parcel by parcel. Um, so we take a a conservative estimate, but we're not saying on acre you're putting a giant single-family house. Um, that acre might be able to fit a duplex or a quad. We're just making sure that within these village centers and village areas. We uh we can accommodate that sixty percent goal. Whether it gets built or not, it's not really up to us, and it's much more up to to the market and and fostered housing. Um, but this is our goal and and that's what we're. We aspire for is having that substantial majority in those village centers um to to conform with that state planning goal. With compact settlements.
Are there any other questions before we roll out maps?
I can't. Stephen, did you turn off your camera? Because I can't see the room. Or somebody there can help me if there are.
My screen.
Yeah, I don't know if that tunes off the video.
But Yan, what I was planning on doing is I have P D S and Naps two.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we definitely want the want the Zoom crowd to see them. Um, if if Stephen, if you can just watch the room and and let me know, it's fine if I can't see it, as long as you call it out. I can look at the Zoom. If there are any hands up on Zoom. Are there are there questions from the the planning commission for starters right now?
We're all set, Yan, no questions.
Okay, I don't I don't see hands up on Zoom, so let's let's go. Usually maps will maps work up conversation.
So we'll start with the current map. And I'll just show everything on Zoom and tell you can explain it.
Yes, so this is how Norwich looks in our current future land use map, Chester. The all of the green areas, the the forest-based resource conservation areas. The satellite imagery, which kind of looks like a, you know, spider paint of colors of darker greens and browns. That's our rural uh rural general area. You can see the village. Uh, the salmon color is the village uh or the the town center as it was called, uh, or is called currently. This is the state designation in gold right in the middle around the central intersections. The purple area was a mixed-use area, and we don't have mixed-use areas anymore uh in the. Regional plan moving forward as the state.
I think you.
Make make the name. Yeah, it's probably easier. Um, there's a transition area, which is in many places still the role that the mixed-use area played for our regional plan. So we'll explain that.
Uh, if you look at map one, it's.
Yeah.
So it looks like the present school district site is the purple area.
And that was in our, uh, it is in our mixed-use area currently.
Right here, yeah.
And this is the.
This is the current.
This is the current.
This is how Norwich looks currently, before we then jump into the proposed draft of the update. Do we start with the town and do the village or?
Yeah, we'll start with the town, so just.
See side by side and broadly the same. So this is the proposed uh draft, the update, our regional.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Big village.
So the dark green areas are a rural conservation areas. That's what's replaced the forest-based resource. Area, the blue is the rural agriculture forestry. The satellite imagery as before is just the world general, shouldn't say just the world general, it's also important, has a lot of working landscape here and there. Uh, the pink area around Norwich Village is the village area. There's a red center to that. That's the village center. The orange is the transition area, which is one of our core settlement areas, and that is. Um, it's also called an infill area, so. Plan for more housing in in there as well, but it's more of a mixed use with some commercial, some municipal, some civic, some residential. Um, all sorts of uses in there. There's a little purple sliver at the very bottom. That's. Allcott Drive, uh, Drive, Allcott Road in in Hartford is a small industrial. Um, park of sorts, and there's some of a similar commercial and and light industrial uses on the Norwich side. So that's a continuation of our our regional plan. And that's the distinction between the transition area, which the transition area and the enterprise can sometimes have similar uses, but. The transition area has more room for housing in, whereas enterprise is kind of full of the commercial and industrial.
I was just gonna point out uh that little purple area is a good example of, Kyle brought this up before, where on this map by itself. There might be just like a little finger of an area. Um, but when you see it at the regional level, it extends into a a much larger area. So sometimes. Sometimes you have have a village center that actually spans two towns and and so you might have a little piece of one in one town. Um, and and a much larger that portion of it and other.
And a good example of that is Union Village, which will span from Norwich and to Hartford and be a village center in both towns.
Right, so.
Oh, can you say more about that relative to? I'm assuming that you don't have the colors turned on in Hartford, not in Union Village, the Hartford side. Uh, they are run by Wilder. Are you, you're not in the colors?
Oh, so we haven't met with Hartford or thatford, yeah, we're meeting with thatford next week.
Okay.
We're hoping to meet with them uh in early October at the latest. And there is a web map that has a a link and it's interactive. You can zoom all over the region. Um, and when when after tonight, we'll turn Norwich on and then next week we'll turn thatford on and so on. And then you can kind of see how everything blends together on this regional scale.
So in general, is it fair to say that just over the line into Hartford on on Route five there is? Uh, as there are things that go along with that little piece of purple on our side?
Yes, so Allcott Drive will also be enterprise because it's. Um, light industrial, some warehouses, some commercial, some offices. It's a lot of that. Um, you know, it's a employment area that doesn't have the space for that residential infill. And the transition, that orange area also continues into Hartford and goes all the way to Wilder. So that's part of that regional kind of of planning of these areas.
So Jeff, uh, we know has a question.
Jeff, you wanna?
Could could you um? Show us the service area of the water district that, you know, the area that's served by water. I'm interested in how the. Boundaries of the water district compare to what you're proposing as the village area.
Don't have the layer turned on.
Yeah.
Map right now.
Okay.
Is it similar or is it different? I mean, is there any reason why the whole the the area that's served by water that's? You know, close to the village center and and really close to major job areas would not be a place that you. You you would look to to accommodate growth?
Uh, Jeff, would you, could you uh tell us where exactly?
For for example, um, this area, I can just demonstrate here, um.
This is a whole subdivision to the east. I think, you know, there's a lot of areas that are served by water here, to the west, to the east.
Okay, this is this is beneficial, and this is one of the reasons why we want to have this meeting is um to see where. Um, there might be uh room to to modify the maps in certain ways, especially if it. Could involve, you know, additional uh space for housing.
Um, definitely, yes, uh.
Just to be clear, what what it would be great to see a map of the area that has water. Um, and and also just to consider the fact that Norwich is so close to major job centers, you know. Uh, the three of the largest job centers serving Vermont are all within like a five or six mile radius here. So why wouldn't we, if there's an area that has water and the. Potential for wastewater, and that that would be a separate question, right? Why wouldn't it be designated a village area?
The best of my um knowledge at the time of of making this draft map, I included everything that was in the. Or adjacent to the existing waters uh network. The stuff around Spring Pond. I wasn't sure how far down Hopson the water went. Uh, on the north side of town, we got into some. Uh geographical constraints when it comes to the Hawk Pine. Um, area, there's a bit of a bluff there and the road access is further up. Um, to the north, and that would kind of sprawl the village in a way that um wasn't necessary because the housing target. Uh, is met by all of these settlement areas, so.
When you say the housing targets met by all these settlement areas, I mean. You you have to be opportunistic. Not everyone's gonna want to develop more housing in those places. You can't assume that you're gonna build. You know, every single parcel is gonna be developed at maximum density. I think you need to. Allow adequate room for people to make decisions. So like the Hawk Pine area is served by water, right? Why isn't that?
No, it's not. It's not, only part of it.
Yeah, I like that. I like the comment on this.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so the V R is that one, basically covers our water district. But to Jeff Luvell's point, we've got adjacent communities in Hanover and Hartford. That should be shown because if you look south on Route five, there's a, it's very highly densely populated with both commercial and residential. So, you know, the fact we have a town line, it cuts off, and so if we're gonna talk about planning. Like Route five south, and as they're showing here, River Road and, you know, Route five uh north, for lack of a way to say it. Uh, those are legitimate areas to look at, whether they're serviced by town utilities or not, which they're not.
Yeah.
Um.
And that's why they're.
Let's see the broader scope. So our current D R zoning basically covers our current water district.
Yes, and that's where the transition area is. At the moment, it's not served by water, um. But the potential in the future, it's adjacent to existing systems. There could be expansion. Um, it's prime area for infill housing development. Uh, and in the case, yes, Route five south is a great location. It connects right into Hartford. Uh, and then the stuff on, you know, River River Road and and Route five north area. And that's really, you know, close to Hartford, close to Hanover, adjacent to the Norwich Village. Doesn't promote uh sprawl and public access. Yep, you have the interstate and the public transit as well. So that's where we were thinking of the 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 village expansion in a way that meets the state planning goals. Meets the housing target and um is in hopefully in alignment with with town goals as well.
So I have a one, just Jeff. I'm sorry, go ahead, Yan.
Well, I just had a quick question. What's the, what category is the pink in here? Because I don't I don't see that in my, I thought.
Area, and the red is the village center. So the the red is that.
Or the gold is our current village center or?
That's the current state designation village center, correct?
Which would expand out.
To cover all that.
All of the red.
Okay, red and then village area. Gosh, I thought you had a color code that was required by this whole process and. I I didn't think pink was village area, but uh. Uh, that lavender color isn't, that's what they call out on my map here, but, uh, okay, so that's that's village area. Village center would be the combination of the gold and the red.
Yes, and then in the the final maps, the rural general will be more of a yellow. Um, we just, the the rural general was the last area that we went to, because we started the village and went out and started a rural conservation and went. And towards rural general was everything else that didn't meet a a settlement or a. Ag or conservation category. So for the purposes of our presentation. The maps will show it as transparent or white, but it'll be uh more of a yellow on the final maps. But yes, every R P C has to follow the same uh color code. We spent a couple meetings talking about what colors to make all these areas.
Just two?
Uh, parts of more than just two meetings, but there was.
They changed them at the time.
We have changed them a few times, so.
The, um, I want to get back to to Jeff's point, that Jeff Luvell on um just making the observation. On the additional area that that has access to um water. Um, and and one of the main reasons we're here is, you know, are there things that maybe in our mapping process? We we might have not accounted for, like in an area that does have access to water that maybe could be part of that village area or. Um, certain farms or or current use activities that maybe are not. Are are adjacent to the relic and forestry that maybe should be pulled into that area. Um, just observations, and we don't need them tonight. This is more just, we would like feedback. Um, and so that, you know, the the planning commission can have some time over the next. Uh, several months to to review and um find uh that provides with comments. And, yes.
Did you want to say something, Mary?
Yes, thanks.
Sorry.
That's okay. Um, on the Route five south, that turning that into the. Transition, I'm trying to square. transition, I'm trying to square that with the state goal that says we want to maintain a historic settlement with compact villages and urban centers separated by rural countryside because it feels to me like if you allow that to be a development zone and then it hits the development zone in Hartford, Wilder, you're going to have one big sprawl between there and Wilder. That gets, goes against the state goal of having uh settlement areas, compact, compact abilities separated by rural countryside.
And that is a a fair point. I'll have a quick response to that. Um, so we're looking at Norwich's village. We want to make sure that the historic village is as compact as necessary, that follows the water everywhere. Want to make sure everything that's served by water is in there. We look at these transition areas, that's more of a a potential for future growth in towns that don't have a growing growth area. Uh, this area here be more of an extension from Hartford from the Wilder Route five area. So more of that regional kind of level planning. Um, and therefore it wouldn't by by expanding Norwich Village to accommodate that potential for the housing northward um would cause more sprawl and then sprawl into existing ag lands versus taking an area that already has high traffic, it's already mixed use and is connected to to Wilder. It, it, either way, you're going to have that space in one place or the other, but on here where you already have the mixes mixture of uses, the higher traffic, the connection to the Wilder Route five area and the interstate. Yeah, it's less detrimental to the natural resources of the area than creating a new village elsewhere in town and expanding the village in a way that would um.
Is that a way that sprawl happens just in general, that kind of explanation that is better? Like it, like it's driven by than by the, where where are we going to put seven, two hundred and seventy units? And so like, so, so, okay, well, put them here because there's more traffic, there's more this, there's more that and 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 I mean, I guess I just wonder like in the, in the history of urban planning, is that does that narrative grow into the sprawl explanation?
Um, I mean, I think just getting back to it, what Kyle said, the ideal location for accommodating new development would be in a location that is accessible to the interstate, accessible to.
I hear that, I hear that.
Our, our business centers.
Yeah.
Um, and it is an extension of an already very developed area. Despite that area not being in Norwich.
But Jan, can I, can I comment? Uh, go ahead. So. Yeah, so I completely disagree with Mary and uh I have no other. So we we're engaged in sprawl. So what we're trying to talk about tonight is how do we, how do we mitigate and reverse the sprawl that we've engaged in for so many years in this town? I have no idea what Kyle two said. I understand what Kyle one said. So this is a key infrastructure uh corridor for myriad reasons. It's a, it's one of, we're one of four core towns. Our our housing deficit is enormous and Jeff Luvell can speak to this like I can. Two seventy, as you said, is a, is a low estimate. There's no, no place in Norwich to do two seventy. So, you know, we we've got enormous infrastructure capacity with respect to water and sewer and Hanover and Hartford. We're not thinking about that. I think the RPC has done pretty well up until maybe tonight in in what I just heard. Uh, relative to how do we sync with with uh local communities? So let's let's think about this in a more broad context. Sprawl means we're we're at the center of the micropole. And if and if we're not going to allow uh or consider what what our needs are in this, in the core, we're, we're going to send it all over the region. That's what we're doing right now. We are mandating sprawl based on our approach.
Also.
So we've got four core towns. Four core towns. Any growth that occurs can't happen in Norwich. So you gotta go miles and miles and miles up. That's sprawl.
That would be the village center, not sprawl.
If you're going to make, make sure that folks uh build a house and share or do do new units in Bradford or Stratford, it's not the core. That's sprawl. Walkable communities where you live, work and shop. That's, that's what we want to do. To to Jeff's point, and this is a regional, you know, it's a regional planning presentation, it's a regional perspective. So that's if you look uh outside of Norwich to the whole region or our relationship to the, to the core four, uh then you'll, you'll get a different definition of sprawl in the regional sense than you do in the pure Norwich sense. Um, and I think that's what we need to do. We need to be able to look at this, look regionally, look how it relates to Hartford, for example. And then, and then focus down on Norwich and say what, what we want to do uh and how we uh adjust our zoning or to promote it. I guess what, so two questions, uh, Kyle, to the regional uh perspective. One is, um, I assume that when you're talking to Hartford, uh, you will, you know, have, now you can, you'll be able to show Norwich's draft there next to theirs and you can talk a little bit about that, what happens at the border. Um, it, it, can you do things that encourage regional cooperation in the sense of saying, hey Hartford, if if you were able to share municipal services across that line, then that makes sense with what Norwich is trying to do there, you know? So that's part of the, what the regional perspective would do for us. So that's the Hartford piece. That's question one. And the other one, I assume you don't, you're, you're not doing Hanover's map for them. Um, but are you talking to Hanover's Regional Commission relative to how? You know, uh, even Norwich's connection to Hanover facilities, my infrastructure might affect, say, the river roadside?
We've, we've not touched on that. I know that global looking at Hanover.
Right.
Um, but with with cooperation between towns and we have policy language in the the regional plan, but maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, Peter Gregory from Two Rivers, yeah, we obviously can't um impose our will on New Hampshire as much as we'd like to. Um, but yeah, they, they have a different land use scheme over there. They don't deal in land use at the regional level at all. I'm on their board. They're on my regional board. You know, it's, it's advisory. They don't really even talk land use as a regional planning commission um like we do here. We have state law that has directed regional planning commissions to do regional planning for fifty years. Um, this latest iteration is a lot more specific. It's a lot more directive. It's a lot more regional than it used to be. It's less uh bottoms up than it used to be. That doesn't sit well with people, but that's the way it is if you want to deal with the housing situation. And this governor and this legislature has said housing is the biggest issue we're facing. Every town has a responsibility to deal with this, to encourage housing in their communities, in their plans and bylaws. And in their investments in infrastructure. The regional commission has a responsibility to educate and encourage through its regional plan more housing. So that's why the militaries are getting larger. Uh, we, we have talked with Hartford for decades about extending uh infrastructure, but that's something we can't compel. But from a a regional perspective, that makes a lot of sense. Hopefully someday, the people will get together and um do some joint investment to deal with this because this is a core, a micropolcal region. It's not just a bunch of six mile, like six mile squares. Yeah. Should I leave now?
Can you just scroll out, please, uh, to see a larger part of Norwich? Um, I think to the yeah, just back to the sprawl point. I mean, if you, you look at most of Norwich, most of Norwich is is being reserved as rural, right? And um so what sprawl would look like is building out in the far parts of Norwich, far removed from the downtown. Right, it's building in between two village centers, right? You know, that's not sprawl, right? That's the opposite of sprawl. That's like compact development. So just, yeah, that's infill. You're, you're filling in. Um, you're basically creating, you know, you have a high density spot to the south, you have our village center. I mean, having some connectivity between them, that's infill, right? I just want to be clear, right? You don't even have to go to the regional context to see, you know, the what sprawl would look like, right? If we were trying to push development out. I, you know, I, I want to thank you for including the water district. I, I thought there were parts that are not included, but we'll, we'll double check that, but, but um would love to see also if there's some way to empower us with the maps, kind of layer on the maps about where there's suitable soils. For septic, it would be interesting just to think about whether there are any spots adjacent to the water district that have really good soils where it would make sense, given the current patterns of development and potential. I think just about, again, not broadening it too wide, but enough additional areas to really create some options. Cause I, I, I think again, you know, people are going to make their own decisions and not everybody who has land in an area that we choose to designate as a transition or a village area is necessarily going to develop it at the same level. So we have to have enough land available to ensure, you know, people can make decisions and still get to your targets. Do, do you have that capacity on that map, on the online map? Does it show soils?
The online map doesn't.
No, it's just the regional map. Uh, but you, you can compare with, I can sure there's a soil layer on the hammer.
I don't think it's relevant.
We have, the, the data is on, you know, our JS software. We have the soil data. We have uh slope data, flood hazard area.
Not relevant.
Why'd you say it's not relevant, Jeff?
Uh, so, so we take, take the, the south, uh southeast corner of Norwich and rezone. And if you can build it, you got the soil building. That's what we've been talking about before my housing subcommittee and planning commission. So you gotta look at each individual. So, so the publicly available soil information doesn't mean anything. What's your capacity on site? I can put my armor in the ground and tell which capacities.
Right. No, I hear you. I, I, I totally hear you. I'd love, I'd love to be able to have a, a more. All I'm saying is that we might want to think about if there are some areas that that look good on the map, there might be some expansions, it's targeted expansions of the village area that might make sense. Uh, and it's just required that they have good soils in order, you know, they either need to have water or wastewater or they need to have good soils. And so I just want to know what our options are. It may be that this is the right, I just, you know, it'd be nice to see that.
So it doesn't matter. Let's go up to Bogies Pit, you know, on Pomnusik, to Union Village, there's a whole bunch of good soils. Where one thirty-two hits Route five. There's a, there's a ton of good soils up there.
What are you proposing? Actually, maybe we should talk about that. What are you proposing? You have a little inset for Union Village Extension. It would be helpful to better understand that. Is that a handle?
That's more, no, that's a, a small extension of the.
Union Village from Thetford.
Sent, yeah, the sent village center in Union Village and Thetford. Um, it doesn't really add anything housing target wise because um it's all flood plain. Um, along the Anpam. Um, but it's just showing that, yes, this is, I mean, it's a a denser, yeah, denser concentration of of residential that's essentially an extension of that village center from the Thetford side, but we haven't met with Thetford yet. Um, and so their map is not not yet uh visible.
We're still waiting for meetings with Thetford and Hartford.
Yeah, we've met with Sharon. Um, and so I, I mean, that might be a good.
Can we talk just about what, and you said something specifically about what we can do? What you're asking uh for input from us and it sounds like, so here's a starting point. The planning commission needs to have some of these conversations around the, the transition areas and, and uh, and then as you put it, you know, what are the uh, what are the, what's the local data that helps you adjust the, the boundaries? So whether we have, here's where the water is in the fire district. Here's where either farms or forestry or specific parcels would bump between conservation and and rural ag and forestry or or whatever. So you're looking for that kind of information. Is there, is there anything else you're, you're really asking for us, uh, from us to help with this?
So if there's any areas of town outside of the village within the village, that the color, the, you know, the, the landy's area that we have a map in this draft, it doesn't really make sense if there's um, you know, some part of town that is more agricultural than the data shows. You could, you know, turn it to the ag and forestry area. If there's an area that's really just residential, if it's already parcelized, fragmented on a major town road and it's in the ag and forestry, you know, make a comment, say, maybe this is more rural general. If there's a part of town that's not as blue, but it's more rural conservation and then forestry. Between those two rural areas is the big thing. We can reconsider. It doesn't mean we're going to promise that it'll change. But we can relook at the area with your reasoning and say, you know, if it's a gray area, if it could go either way. Uh, there's a couple of those in in many towns in Norwich. Most of the rural areas are fairly straightforward. But there's always a couple of gray areas depending on who's looking at the map. The, the data has a lot of overlap when it comes to the ag and forestry conservation and then ag and forestry in general for the rural. So just if there's an area that just looks out of place, um, you can either, you know, you can draw on the map, you can write down a comment, you can send either of us an email.
Yeah, I was just, I was gonna say for the planning commission, I suggest compiling all of your comments and.
That's what I was, you could get, even if you can, because you will have maps. You'll have GIS maps and so forth that relate to this. So it would, it would certainly be helpful, I think, if, if you're the point for as we come in and circle a specific parcel and so forth, that we get that to you, you put it all on a, on an overlay or something that can share with TROC.
Um, and then I just want to show because, so from the planning commission, I think the best way to get comments is if you, again, uh, have them all in a single document. If there are map comments, you can draw on the map. We will also send PDFs, so you can print out smaller versions. Everyone can look at them on on the computer. Um, and so we can take uh visual comments from maps that way as well. Um, but I just want to show everyone where all of this information lives on the Two Rivers website. Um, so if you go to trorc.org, um, that brings you to our homepage. And right at the top, we have the Draft Twenty Twenty Six Regional Plan. Um, you just click all the progress here. And see, it's loading. Okay, well, just when, there we go. So it takes you there. Um, and it has all the information on uh the regional plan update and process. Um, you can, as Kyle said, you can either send comments to us directly. Um, or you can send them to this email here, regionalplan@trorc.org. Um, and then at the bottom of this page, Norwich's map will appear here um, is access to that online map. Um, and so you click that link and it takes you to the online map. And this is maybe more where residents can make comments. I think that's the more suitable avenue. Um.
And I'll be sure to share that week in the minutes.
That would be great, yes. Um, but you can make comments directly on the map. Obviously Norwich's map is not um, put up yet. But the way that you make a comment is you would select this big red uh alert exclamation. That's his new feature. And you'd place it somewhere on the map. Um, so maybe right here. And then it comes up with a comment tab and you can, can write in your comments. So that's a good way for, for residents to be able to provide comments as well if, um, and you want to provide outreach to to residents and let them know that this is, this process is going on and and they can, they can comment as well.
One thing, when you're making those comments, make sure you hit the create button at the bottom. If you don't hit that, it won't save. But if you hit create, it'll pop up and then there's a back arrow at the top of that tab. It's not the most straightforward thing, but it works. It leaves the comment, leaves a pin on the specific parcel or area of town. It's all anonymous. We don't know who says what. So, yeah, just follow the instructions at the top here. Yeah. It's.
This area here.
Yes.
What was the thinking about that? I'm looking at the area, um, kind of a, uh, on the. What was the thinking about that? I'm looking at the area um, kind of a, uh, on the, on the west side of the highway. Um, cause that was, where was that in? Yeah, that, what was, what's the thinking about that becoming a transition area? And I, I'm just, I don't know if you can, could you describe it? It's um, it's on, this is five north, just basically uh after church street as you're heading towards Upper Loveland. It's now been designated as the, the, yeah, right there is as transition. Uh, as it approaches, goes under the highway. And so just wondering why cut off that piece there? What is the, what was the rationale for thinking that that would be transition rather than what it had been?
So that is one of those gray areas. It could be village area, it could be transition area. Uh, there's a, a small mixture of uses there. There's more potential for housing infill. The village could expand in that direction. Uh, I think given the data, um, it could still be on, on public water, but due to the terrain, mixture of uses.
Is that like where the old um, where uh we saw the soccer group used to be the um, you know, and David, uh, and uh, and uh, what's his name over in um, Hannah Rees to own it?
So it's
throwing Willingham.
So I could point, but the, the stuff on the, on the south side of that map is VR2. Uh, and, and it was, you know, I actually have a house where my mother lives. In that, uh, the, the stuff north of Church Street, Route 5. It uh, you know, uh, on the east side of the interstate is uh, is, is, you know, approaching the interstate by Upper Loveland is a cliff. Yeah, it ain't possible. Anything on the south side of Route 5 is developable.
Yep.
What, what's uh on the uh river roadside is what the planning commission said back in 95 is uh, is an appropriate context for uh, you know, mixed use developments. So that makes sense.
And that's where the transition has that mixture of uses with the housing infill component.
So, so the explanation for the north side?
North side, I'm, this is in the terrain. There's a, a small mix of uses. It's further away from the, the village center. So the, the walkability isn't quite there yet for the, the neighborhood side of the aspect, uh, when you're looking at village area. So there's a couple of different things. It could go either way.
Or it could go back to what it was.
It's a legit, a legitimate of comment. If someone wants to comment that north, the, the terrain north of there that's shown in, in orange now is way too steep to do anything with, then that's a useful comment and could shrink, shrink that, make that go away. Um, that, yeah, where your hand is there.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, to, to that point, Yon, like it, these areas for, for our purposes, um, we're really trying to make sure we meet that housing target. But if it's not billable, it's not getting counted into the housing target anyway.
Yeah. Yeah. So you're going, looking at the parcels, if it's a ton of steep slope, we won't look at that for counting towards the target.
So Jeff LaBelle's point, I think it, it's worth talking a little bit about the, the realistic uh, how housing happens here. I mean, you, we, we call it a transition area. Depending what we do with zoning and, and how much easier this makes Act 250. I mean, it's uh, it's gonna be a few projects that take multiple years to happen. And then it's gonna be various ADUs and, and infill things. Um, in these areas, but I, I just, I find it realistically very hard to imagine 270 units uh in, in five years, but um, I'm trying to get at the realism of that and, and what really can be done to encourage it and uh how much weight to give what we're talking about here.
Hey, Yon, if I may, uh, uh, so I think the RBC, this, this is, this number is low, as you said earlier. Right, the RBC's objective is to say, how do we, how do we look at what the real housing needs in the context of the micro column? Uh, this is a start. And, and so even though we've inadequately addressed that, it's a start.
True. And, and I think what we can do in a five-year um frame is, you know, take a really close look at our, our bylaws to enable it. That's all we can do.
And that's the point of the housing target, housing goal is to plan for the possibility of such development in order to build the housing units necessary to keep up with demand and then exceed the demand if, if possible. Um, so yes, by looking at these areas, looking at your bylaws, by planning for this to potentially happen, that's really the goal of mapping and planning efforts here. So that someone will come in.
To our conversations, go, you know, a big picture conversation for the planning commission relative to zoning would be, you know, here's, here's the village and the tight stuff around there. But we have this density calculation by miles from Tracy Hall. You know, how does that relate to these rural conservation areas and the, the different rural classifications? Uh, and, and really what, what does that mean? Should we adjust the zoning districts and the, and the zoning regs uh in a way that takes all this into account? Because uh, the, the density formula doesn't radically shift uh, housing. It's a, it's a minor influencer.
Yon, can I tell what about that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So where does a road? Um, I think the blue needs to disappear. So anywhere that you've got a crowded quarter in our town, which is part of it, the micro column, you know, you've got access, if you can build on it, and it might be two units. Well, well, let's uh, let's think of it in terms of how we're going to get to 270, what's really needed.
I love, I will, with the blue areas, I mean, housing, of course, exists, will continue to exist and is still obviously going to be allowed um, in the regional plan. It's not saying you can't build houses there. It's just the predominant use is more working landscape. There might be residential here and there. There will be a couple of houses built here and there. If it's two units, that won't trigger Act 250, so.
And for development that does, in rural ag and forestry, it's just concentrating the development, the residential. So it's not fragmenting that, that ag field or that, that forest land.
So you build on the edge of the fields, the edge of the forest. You don't build a house or development smack dab in the middle of a, an, an ag field.
Yeah, I, I, I think to your, your point, Jeff, um, that's really captured by the transparent areas here. The, the rural residential growth in those areas.
Yes. And in most cases, the major roads, unless there's a current use farm or a large area that's indicated by land use, surland cover data. Um, most of the areas along the major roads are in rural general. Unless there's another indicator, otherwise.
What I'm trying to say is mile and a half up from Tracy Hall, maybe 30 miles like for effort.
I agree.
So this needs to reflect the micro column and it doesn't, from my perspective.
Well, and I think that's fundamentally, uh, you know, a big topic of the conversation over the the coming time of, of the planning commission's work is to say, okay, how, to what degree does Norwich want to see its uh, position in a regional context? And what does that mean about how we zone? Uh, because if we, it, if we zone like we're Chelsea or Tunbridge or, you know, uh, totally different relationship to the, to the big picture. That's, that's a decision, but the town has to consciously talk through that and uh, and do that as part of our zoning and plan update. Jeff, LaBelle?
Yeah, uh, 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 Tom, and a question. So I I do think it's important to remember that what goes on here is just about creating options for the town. It doesn't force us to change our zoning, right? That's a separate decision that we'll need to make. But if we haven't designated a place as a village area, for example, then we won't get priority access for affordable housing funding. We won't get priority access for infrastructure funding. You won't have the option of, of recommending that as a tier one B area, right? So, so part of this is about ensuring that our options, you know, we have more options going forward, right? It, it, again, it doesn't compel us to change our zoning, but at least gives us you know, more flexibility. I guess what, one thing that would be useful to hear from the regional planning commission is what are the statutory criteria? Like what would prevent us, for example, from going, you know, northwest to that relatively densely populated area that you now show as rural, general? Um, does it have to do with water and wastewater infrastructure? Could you just, I think we need to know what the parameters are so that we can know what our limitations are in terms of, of, of being able to make recommendations? Does that make sense?
Yeah. So northwest of Norwich Village, the village area goes all the way to Brigham Hill. Um, that's kind of the road narrows. You have the, the constraints from the terrain. You're right on the, the stream there. I'm pretty sure the water.
Just north. I'm sorry. If you just go northwest a little bit of that, just to make sure I understand. So when you, if you, if you just right there, it, that's not part of the, the proposed village, right? That area that sort of looks like it's settled, that's subdivided.
So it's rural general, rural general up there, correct. And that's because at that point, you're starting to get far enough away from the village center to where you're not having your neighborhoods be walkable towards that core at the moment. And then the water, I don't, I don't think the water goes that far north, and I could be wrong.
That, that would be the kind of question I think that we would want to ask. Again, I'm not singling out that one, but I'm just saying, you know, we act like it's all about walking, but the reality is most people drive. And the reality is that being located there is much less sprawling than being located way out in Bradford. Or, you know, any other, you know, village center that's 20 miles from Jobs, right? So if you, if you want to put housing where the jobs are, you have to acknowledge that someone might need to like bike a little bit or, or, or drive two miles. And we can't just have this sort of imaginary notion that everyone's going to walk everywhere. I'd love to have more people walking, but most people don't walk, right? And so what are the limitations? Like, is it, is it, I think it's about water and wastewater infrastructure, right? You have to at least have good soils in those areas to be designated, right? As a village area? So that, that would be the kind of thing that we need to know. So when we're looking at this, we can make, you know, uh, good recommendations for you all.
Yeah. So it's, it's really, it's the existing water and wastewater. The, the reason that you can't have a planned growth area in Norwich is because you don't have an existing municipal sewer system. Uh, we want to make sure there's, yes, walk and bike ability to the, the downtown or village centers. Um, to employment centers. We want to make sure that the villages are relatively compact to themselves. Um, we want to make sure that, you know, the town has the planning in place for the higher uh density. So if the town you know, if you go too far out from the, the village and want it to be village area, but not currently served by water, the, the possibility of that development occurring for a village area is less likely. The transition area is a good in between for where there isn't currently the water service, but there could be in the future. Um, and again, they're keeping that more on the Route 5 side because it's already the, the transit, the um commuter potential.
We, we have a, a bus wrap that turns around and um.
More lane.
Yeah, more lanes.
So Brigham Hill, you know, cut off Brigham Hill up Beaverman Road, uh, it's really difficult to develop. There aren't so water system doesn't go there like, oh, so, so, you know, doesn't even can't allow the possibility of somebody can find soils to do a couple of things, whatever.
And that would go towards the, the townwide target, not the core settlement area, 60%.
And within rural general, we're expecting that to be more developed in general. So it's not, you know, it's not going to be, in a rural context, it's not going to be a, a village, but you know, it, it's expected that there's going to be housing in those, those areas. It's where we want most of the housing that's in the rural areas to be located as in rural general and not, not in the rural ag and forestry or rural conservation.
Oh, if you just, I'm just trying to ballpark it. So if we said 40% of, you know, 270, or just call it, you know, 100 units uh, outside the village area. Okay, it's mostly in rural general. Hopefully 100 units in five years. How many, how many building permits do we usually do in a year, Stephen?
Not that many.
Not that many, even if, so that'd be 20 a year for five years.
Yeah, no, no. You'd like to do 20 in five years.
Yeah. So I think we, you know, we just have to fundamentally talk through this as a town to say, how, how much do we want to turn the knob up on development? And then what are the mechanisms that you have to move that knob? But um, it, it's, it's a significant, 270, uh, and I won't, I won't say exactly what Kevin Geiger said relative to the chances of getting 3,600 in the Two Rivers region, but it's, it's unlikely. Uh, it's a, it's an aspirational goal. Um, but Norwich has to talk through what it, what's, what it wants to be in five years relative to the region. Linda Gray?
Hi, thank you. Um, and I, I just wanted to, to um say that I agree with some of the points that uh Jeff Goodrich and Jeff LaBelle have made about about Norwich basically doing its fair share in terms of housing for our micropolitain area. And I have this question to ask. Well, first I want to make sure I understand things. So that the regional future land use maps, they will exist and they are, they uh play a very important role for like future grants for if development proposals come forward. But they, they, but for actual development to actually happen, it's going to take uh, like there's still the controls that exist from local zoning. And so if I'm understanding that situation correctly, my question is for the regional planners, why don't you just decide, hey, a radius of, I don't know, perhaps a mile and a half or two miles from, you know, Dan and Wits or something like that, like draw an, a, a circle and, and designate everything within that as village area. I don't know whether that would enlarge. Uh, like I don't know what the uh, you know, what the uh per, distance on this map is, but, but I'm just wondering, like, why don't, why don't you guys take that approach? And then the particular details about slope or water or that, or, you know, soils and stuff like that will naturally come up on their own and get dealt with case by case. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Linda. That, that gets back to um, early on in the, the presentation, we had the slideshow. We brought up two state planning goals, the one that addressed rural areas, forestlands, farmlands, and the one that addressed compact village settlements. Um, and, and so you're kind of seeing both of those play out here where we're encouraging the village to grow to an extent to accommodate that new development, but trying to keep it compact. While also differentiating between what are those working lands, where are those rural conservation lands where um, if there was something in Act 250, there would be different policies in place for, for those. And so we're, we're kind of playing a balancing act with both those compact village centers and and the protection of those uh rural lands.
And if I may, we're, we're pretty constrained as a regional planning commission by what's written in statute as far as the land use area descriptions and what they can contain and how they can be drawn. We too, for the first time, have to have our regional plan approved by an independent body. Much like, you know, we approve the Norwich plan that your request uh have for the year. We have to submit our plan uh 60 days in advance of adoption to the land use review board. And they will determine whether or not our boundaries in each of our areas of the, the region, the 30 towns are reasonable and consistent with the descriptions in the statute. Um, so we desperately want local input. But if we go around these 30 towns, you know your town better than we do. Um, but as Kyle kind of hinted, we probably can't take each and every piece of suggestion and then make it into the plan, at least as staff. We're not going to give it to my board and say, oh, they're both for this.
We can make considerations.
Just, just as an example with the, because we were just discussing this area up uh north, kind of along Brigham Hill and Jeff, you point out soils are, are not great. It's not very developable. Um, the further out that we get, when it does get to the land use review board, there are less, I guess, arrows in the quiver to argue. I guess arrows in the quiver to argue, oh, that can be a village area. Um, it becomes much more difficult because it's it's less and less meeting that. That statutory definition of what that village area is. Um, and so, yeah, in that regard. Um, it's also considering, okay, is, does this village area or this village center. Are we using the same lens that we're using for those areas in all the other towns so that we have. That we're using that same methodology across the board?
Hey, hey, Jan, may I comment? Yeah, so Jeff Lubel, what about soils? Best soils. Some of the best soils in our region are from Pearl Farms north up Route Five. And then along one thirty-two, the Clark Farm to the United Village Board. So so I I think if you said that the NRCS uh soil information matter. In that, in those two areas, I mean, there there might be capacity for a hundred fifty, two hundred units in that entire quarter, just based on soil and and. Like water race quarter. The soils are truly fantastic. Now, a large part of that is in conservation, but uh, you know. Uh, if the question is what's developable, you're in a major road corridor, there's almost no impact in downtown settings, et cetera. So it might be worth pointing out, some of the best soils are even along this quarter, and there's some density there.
Okay.
The statute, I think, often maintaining historic settlements. Gets away if you start building all up Route Five North in a concrete area. I don't think that's what the statute's calling for.
Yeah, mile up versus thirty miles up.
Well, and that's the distinction is that the.
Versus sixty miles.
Road and empty sprawl, so that's where I'm coming from.
Oh, I think the definition and and to to Peter's point, the. The lenders of review board will look and see, does it meet definitions of compact development? If you have a regional lens uh on versus a town lens. The definition of compact development is different. Uh, you know, you could, something. A few miles up the road in Norwich is still compact from a reg- regional point of view, but it's not from Norwich's. But anyway, that's that's part of the conversation. Vince, did you ever hand up a minute ago?
Uh, yes, let me get that here. Um, I might have missed it earlier, just kind of uh thinking through here. Um, I want to kind of just ask a question, how this relates to Act eighty-one eighty-one tiers? And are these interchangeable or is there some sort of other uh uh things that need to be done to? Be uh qualify for, you know, like tier one B incentives and some things like that. So I was just curious how this relates to that and uh. Yeah.
Yeah, good question.
Um, so. Tier one B is really what we're, we can map the tier one B areas. Um, the tier three is being handled by the land review board. They're gonna make the tier three map. They're still trying to figure out what. They're gonna include in that area. But for for tier one B, we're really looking at the village center and the village area. So those are the two that would qualify for tier one B if the town requests. Um, and that's.
Are we restricted? Are we restricted to what is on this map to what we can request for that?
So yes, what will be on our, whatever the final um map looks like for our regional future land use. Map, your village center and village area, however it's mapped, when we send that to the land review board. Those that the pink and the red area will be um.
So not 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 transition.
Not transition because there's not currently the the water, uh, the municipal water in place. And that's just, that's a requirement for the tier one B area to have at least municipal water and the zoning and subdivision.
Piece of right where it says river on River Road, it's certainly arguable that the water is is available there. Because it comes right up.
Yes, and it's 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 available. Um, the the, that area of of town is. A little more separate from the village center currently, so making that village area, we'd have to. See if we could make that possible uh possibility. It's one of those squares that we can look at again. But as of now, and in this draft, the the red and pink area is really the area that we know. Without a doubt, could qualify for the tier one B area.
The orange areas were um planned growth areas, and now they're uh demarcated as transition. Can you speak to the difference?
So the plant growth area. The requirements for plant growth area are are a lot stricter than village area and transition area. It requires municipal water and sewer. And our first draft. Um, the transition areas were always transition areas, like Hartford has some planned growth area. Randolph has some planned growth area. There's not many in our region, just based on the requirements. I.
Okay, yeah.
It it it's, transition is a. It could be considered a future growth area, but it's not a planned growth area per Act eighty-one. It's a transition or infill area. That in the future could have the water and wastewater um service areas expanded into that has the. Capacity and and makes sense for future infill development.
Okay, it sounds like a misunderstood.
Yes, it's okay.
Um, and we're just getting to to Cal's point on like, it's kind of a a gray area between. You know, where you draw that line with the village area and the transition. It's just when we bring this to the land use review board and they're reviewing it for those. Statutory criteria, you know, it it starts to become less and less walkable the further out you go. Even if you still have water in in that area, so um be be. Larger and and longer that you make that that village area, um, it becomes a much harder. Argument to make it or less defensible in terms of meeting that uh statutory definition.
And also be very difficult to expand the village center and the village area. On, you know, towards Hanover from, you know, around where we are if you're going towards Hanover, because there's a lot of conserved lands around here. There's a lot of slope. There's, you know, other protected lands, the the water that's there, the village boundary on the Hanover side is kind of. Where it is. There's not much room for growth in that direction, so connecting to uh the bridge into Hanover and the the highway. Exit is really tricky, given these constraints, which is why this area being more disconnected from the village directly would make it harder to be a village. Area versus connecting the transition up Route Five and then down River. That's the way we kind of see it, is it goes up Route Five and then down. River Road versus going through the interstate just because of the constraints in that.
Couple questions people have. Um, uh, Christian first, and then Jeff Lubel, and then Linda. Christian?
Um, I said, two quick questions. One is, we talked like Hawk Pine and some of the like, I mean, denser areas and why they might not be classified. Did I miss why we took, what the reason Hobson Road and that kind of doesn't extend? I mean, that's all pretty walkable and built loops back into the transition area with public transit and is there a reason that's all?
Water service.
It's water service. That if if it's too distant or not currently covered by the water. Um, the fire district or municipal water and the capacity, village area doesn't. You know, it needs to have at least access to that municipal water. So if you start getting too far away, the land's review board will look at the water. Coverage and say, this isn't even close. Be, this has to be rural general or transition or um.
And and then, can I, one other follow up is just what the regional planning board, like, is there any rule on? So you've got the dividing line there between Hartford and Norwich on the south. And I don't know exactly where water goes to, if it's to the boundary, but it's pretty close up there and there's a bike path, like. Some of those regional type things, does the regional planning board at all get involved? Like. If we were to extend water sewer from Hartford North? Is that part of what you're planning on with this transition area or is that?
Yes, the transition area in that part of town is the potential of water expanded expansion from Hartford. Uh, because it exists right up to the border um currently and in the future, if it were to expand. Into Norwich, that would cover that area. But on the Hartford side, that's also transition on their side as more of an infill. So it's a continuation of this larger regional area that isn't um village center for either tenant. Question?
My question related to that.
Hold up, Kathleen. Point of order, Jan.
Yeah, I got, I have a queue here. Jeff, Jeff Lubel is next, then we can, then we can go to the room if there's somebody.
Great, thank you. I I just want to, um, well, first of all, to to Christian's point, um. My understanding of the of the village area is that it either requires you to have publicly available water or wastewater or. Wastewater capacity in the soils. Um, is that correct? So.
That, the reading, the, the way it's written is a little. Uh, confusing and and leaves some room for interpretation. The way that we've interpreted it is. It's it's two points. It needs municipal water or wastewater and then maybe period if there's no wastewater available. Then it needs adequate source, but it still requires there to be um at least municipal water in order to have a higher density of residential development. If there was just soils and no water, then if a town is zoning in subdivision, a town like. You know, Versier could have a village area, but a town like South Relfton that doesn't have zoning. Couldn't, which doesn't quite meet the housing target or the goals of Act One Eighty-One. So it's. That was our interpretation based on how it's it's written that the municipal water is a requirement. And then when we look at tier one B areas, it definitely is a requirement to have municipal water.
No, for for sure, tier one B, yes. No, for tier one B, yeah, I'm just focused on the on the.
The lines up with our village areas for the towns that. Every town that has a village area also can have a tier one B area. And that's kind of the way we have this map, so that town, it's pretty straightforward and. There aren't, there aren't a lot of lines that are confusing.
Right. I I I guess the the point I wanted to make though is was the statement that you're treating Norwich the same way as you're treating every other town and I. I I don't understand why that's required by state statute, and it certainly doesn't make sense from a regional planning standpoint to. To treat a town that's far removed from jobs. The same way you would treat a town that's literally three miles from one of the largest job centers. In the region, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Like, why wouldn't you say that if we want to promote compact development, we want to promote housing near jobs, right? And if you happen to be one point three five miles away from Dan and Wits, like, who cares? I mean, the question is. How far are you away from Hanover? How far are you away from White River Junction? How far are you away from from the major job centers in Lebanon? Like, that. Seems to me more more important from a, uh, the goal of trying to advance compact development and trying to. Advance the statutory goals. So I I feel like maybe you're, you feel constrained by the state statute. I'd love to see where, but like. Shouldn't shouldn't you be treating the core areas a little bit differently than you treat the kind of more remote areas and trying to. Find ways to really facilitate and encourage development in these areas so that people don't have to drive so long to get to work?
Uh, so Jeff, I'll I'll respond to you because I made that point. Um, I was referring to the. Uh, future, regional future land use areas and the definitions around those and being consistent across towns when reviewing. Um, the considerations for which areas fall within which regional future land use area. When it comes to the size of the village centers and village areas. Um, we did take into consideration differences. Uh, we brought that up in the presentation around the housing targets with. Looking at towns that have access to infrastructure, have access to the interstate, is having a higher housing target and therefore. Would likely need a larger village center, a larger village area um to accommodate that. Norwich having the. Third highest population in um in the region is going to have. You know, these larger areas, these larger transition and village areas than you might have in in a lot of our smaller towns that. Just don't, simply don't have that housing target. You have. Uh, maybe Granville that has a housing target of six in their village center. Versus.
I have a queue of people here, so let's, let's see if we can, this, this is the beginning of a conversation, not, not the end of it. So I I think we, we've identified certain issues and we will follow up with them, but so I want to run through. People who want to speak this time. So Linda, and then I think there's somebody in the room.
Kathleen.
Yep.
Hi, thank you very much. I just want to uh piggyback a little back on the discussion that was along uh the River Road area. That's the sort of a golden tan color and that's I I think identified as a transition. Area of, and I just wanted to point out that historically, there was a village area there, Lewiston. And I know that the Interstate Exchange uh, you know, is now in place between what we think of as our. You know, regular village area and that former, you know, village area. But I think that argues, from my perspective, it argues that that, that I, I think. I would like to see the pink village area extended to that area. Like, you can see McKenna Road, there's already. Uh, you know, a um, there's already a, you know, like a whole bunch of, there's a neighborhood right there. And there used to be a village right along River Road, and I know that there's also, you know, a semi kind of. Industrial kind of operation there, but I think the area, I I think the area could legitimately. Be included as a village area. Thank you.
Water service, Vince, the McKenna Road, water service goes down to the bridge.
Okay.
It's like a hair from the bridge.
Yeah. Who's, someone in the room wants to speak and then Vince and Christian?
Kathleen, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, my question, my question is about uh Route Five South. For many years, there's been conversation. About uh accessing and working with Hartford for our water treatment. And what I'd like to know now is what's the status of that discussion? Who is responsible for continuing that pursuit? And how would we begin to know uh what it would cost us?
Those are all excellent questions. I believe that it would be the the town select boards coming together and, oh, sorry. Um, my understanding is it would be the town select boards coming together and and figuring out what that would would look like in terms of. Sharing the that infrastructure across town, town boundaries. I'm not sure if we really play much of a role in. In that.
We would bring the doughnuts and the cider and stuff to facilitate. Yeah, we're really. Elected officials need to talk about that and see if there's uh a win-win in that regard.
And I think, I mean, I would add that obviously that should be done uh. With a view to the overall town plan and the overall zoning rank, so I would hope that. If the if the planning commission felt that was an important uh area. That needed that infrastructure, we would put it in a proposed plan and we would drive that conversation with the select board. So I think. The planning commission should should see ourselves as as very involved in that. That kind of conversation. And also, it's also being driven by certain specific projects that are right on the border there. Uh, but that's very uh, it's very isolated. Uh, Vince?
I was just trying to understand a little bit more about the transitional areas. And is it just based off of potential for it's near municipal water? Or wastewater, or is there there really more to it? Because it's. Uh, those areas just seem like the the areas that could potentially be flagged as a tier one B, but it that. Aside from its proximity to the center, uh, I just, I just was unclear on how. Uh, I I guess you differentiate things that could easily be, have municipal water but doesn't, or. Maybe hypothetically down the road have potential, like there's kind of a spectrum there. So I was curious, uh, if there was anything else that was considered, that that make those considered transition zones other than water.
Yeah, I think that um the transition tends to be, just in terms of of the land uses involved. It tends to be more of a mixed uses, whereas that village area is more of a. Housing neighborhood residential focus, it's more walkable. Um, in terms of what you can have in a transition area, I don't know if it's, I, it's not required to have um.
Yeah, it has to be.
Water or wastewater necessarily.
Adjacent to existing systems with the potential for future growth. Uh, into that area to allow for a higher density of of housing infill. So. It's a semi-realistic future potential area of of growth from the existing village. Whereas the village area is already. the existing village, whereas the village area is already a more dense, more residential, more neighborhood kind of area that surrounds that core village center. And that's just the the levels of which we're looking at these um settlement areas is the the village center is that the densest mixed use core, the village area is more of your neighborhood. The transition is this is where the village can, you know, potentially grow in the future if the municipal services are expanded in that direction.
Okay, cause it's it's clear in the village center, you know, it's your tree rings that kind of grow out and out and out and it's based off of the very core of the town, but those those two areas seem like they could uh be up for debate on what layer they actually fall.
And we'll we'll look again at at the water coverage and if it's covered by water, we can make a consideration to include that depending on how far away from the 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 core and and as it's mapped now with the the methods that we use, your housing target fits within these settlement areas as they exist now. So.
Whether it's a village area or a transition doesn't matter for the housing target.
Yeah, it'd be the tier one B area would be the only thing that would change.
Christian?
So matters for designations and for accessing public benefits. Yeah, because you don't get benefits if it's a transition area that that you do in a village area.
Just a second, Christian's got his hand up.
Yeah, I just I want to circle back and Yon made this point earlier. I just I I'm pretty familiar with the the core area you have here um living in the village area myself and like I just don't see two hundred sixty units like to Yon's point like I I I realize that's aspirational, but I I unless every person is gonna let one acre lot subdivide into one acre lots and you're gonna put a whole heck of a lot of units on route five and very dense areas that would be pretty out of character with the rest of Norwich. I just don't see two hundred sixty units here, so I'd really encourage um especially if transition is to your point, it's aspirational. It's the idea that we can grow into something, we can expand wastewater or water access. To me, like filling in some of this Elm Street, Hobson Street, down Main Street, making it continuous so that the village district with the transition areas is one continuous core downtown area would make a lot more sense. It really doesn't make sense to me to have like the way the pink is in the pink in the core area. And then you, there's like a four or five block gap with rural. And then you get back into transition like it. It really should be one core area. So Hobson Elm down Main Street all the way to to the intersection on Route five. Like those are areas I think would both expand and the potential for units to go on and would make a lot more sense on the layout of the map as the town currently operates.
Yeah. We're getting on time uh our time constraints here, but I want to make sure we at least put everything on the table that that needs to be. Are there from Two Rivers's point of view? Are there any other wrap up comments or or things you want to put on our on our ta- on our plate for getting back to?
Um I thi- I think just reminding folks on our website, trorc.org. Um on that main page right at the top, that's where you can access all the information around um this process. And there there's an FAQ on there that the planning commission has. There's also definitions for all these regional future land use areas and ways to reach out and this map will go live on the online map, so anyone can go on and and make comments.
And for what period of time will you be accepting comments?
Yes, um so ideally we would like to have comments. Yeah, probably ideally before the end of December at most. October, November. I think, yeah, as long as we get all our comments by let's say November at the latest, November one at the latest, right? That'll give us time to make any considerations if we were to to make any edits that were still complied with our methodology with the state's planning goals. If it's a gray area, if it go either way, if we get our update, if we know exactly where the water goes, if we if our data was wrong. That way we can make all these changes before December so that it's ready by the time that goes to the land, to Two Rivers Board and then um for their review.
Yeah, just to oh, there there are some big issues here relative to, you know, Norwich's regional responsibility and how we might change change our zoning or kind of those things are not going to be addressed in in a month and a half here. So uh clearly this is gonna iterate uh as we go through our town planning process.
Uh this doesn't have to, yeah, change the the zoning though. This doesn't have any bearing on this.
Right, but our so our town plan redo over the course of the next two years will talk about some of these regional issues and you know, decide how we want to do it, how we want to talk to Hartford, all those sorts of things. Um so we can, we can have our map look a little different than this one. We can update this one, but I I think the comments that are gonna come by the end of uh October are gonna be this the the specific ones. Where where do the hydrants go? Hey, this farm should be in green rather than in blue, you know, that level of comment.
Yes, those parcel by parcel, if it's a gray area that you would want us to ma- maybe reconsider. And then we can, you know, see if it works. Um but yeah, any comments that are in that capacity, we we want to see your comments. We love as much feedback as possible. It's helpful in in making a map that, you know, reflects um local you know, local planning goals, local information we might not know just using GIS and our our information from you know, living in the area from all these different things. There's always something the, you know, gets a small thing could get overlooked here and there on accident and uh so any comments that help us make a map that's as accurate as possible to the statute to what's on the ground. Uh we'd love to have your comments and use that web map and put a put a pin on the the map in which parcel and um all of that. But yeah, we'll leave these maps, the paper maps with the planning commission um for you to to muse and to draw and we'll send some PDF maps as well. And uh yeah, it should be everything. Thank you all for having us and for letting us present and uh look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, so yeah, thank you. Uh definitely fires up the kind of conversation we need to have. And Vince, if we can make sure on the minutes, I did, I just think it's important on the minutes uh and in people's heads to have this distinction between the relatively uh minor tweaks to these borders based on local information uh that's different than uh major uh policy questions that we're gonna be talking about over many months. So we should certainly encourage the planning commission and the public to give that kind of local color information. All right, I I'm definitely in the crowd, so can we uh can we take a mo- do you want to deal with minutes or do you want to adjourn and and deal with that to the next meeting? All right, I will take a motion to adjourn, but before we do that, cause then then you run. Um I would like to propose a special meeting on the thirtieth. If we, if you could. Availability for September thirtieth, if you could separately, and then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Okay, thank you, Mary, but if everyone just talk twenty-third is another option.
Yes, I can do the next one. So I'm gonna be in Washington, New York.
Okay, so if people can, let's let's not try now, but if and me twenty-third.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Motion to adjourn?
Is that Steven?
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Yon.
All right, I'll talk to Stephen. I yeah, I need to talk tomorrow. And actually, Mary, I'm gonna talk to Stephen tomorrow and I, cause I'm supposed to put something in the packet about for the solar sighting subcommittee relative to potential site maps. And so that that needs to go in a packet for tomorrow. For Tuesdays.
The select board meeting?
No, the solar sighting subcommittee meeting next Tuesday needs to have a packet that over the next day.
Next Tuesday?
It needs a pack and I have a task to put uh some mapping potential in information into the packet. So need to pull that together tomorrow or the next day.
And did the select board approve the language?
Yes. Yeah, I had to I had to write it a little bit, but we got it's acceptable for both the affordable housing subcommittee and the solar sighting subcommittee. That's that's approved.
And we can, we can talk about the mapping and as well tomorrow.
Okay. Call you in the morning.
And then you and I circle.
I don't do as much for this, you know, I'm saying that, but um but I would like to be part of the theater of the car because there are only three people, so Yon and I would never call. Yeah, it's stupid. I mean, it's it's really stupid and then it's not the end part of it. So try to do anything, because I
Yeah, yeah.
Kelly from.
I mean, if you have time tomorrow, we're gonna give Would you like me to send you an email or sort of a briefing of your conversation?
I just wanted to see the other day.
Yeah, but that's that's late, but I'll move to that and tomorrow I told him.
Yeah, I can talk in five. Let me let me send you an email.
Okay, and then first at five person sending that's never called, and when I get it to the car, I
Sure. Sounds good. Yes, sir.
I got it. We got an early meeting that ends around nine, but I so when Paul, when do we ask about meeting?
Yeah, it's basically um uh Gregory Heinz is gonna be in Norwich on the eighteenth and is asked for a meeting and
By the by the
By the key to see. Well, let's let's do that.
I'm gonna I'm gonna try and underwrite by um what's today.
Okay.
So while taking this.
All right. So why don't why don't we say this? If you have time, check your calendar. If you have time, they need to to meet with the you know, the three of us.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'll review. See you, Mary.
I don't want to get in the way of ice cream.
I'll keep your application complete on the eighteenth.
Okay.
That that way I can bring it to the
No problem. No problem. I've got the
That night.
Plots once they've done right now, um this thing, I know I just got a revise, so we're we're like this close.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have an application more on our
No, I
If there's if there's, you know, some changes that these happen in advance, am I gonna share that stuff?
No.
It'll be final form until ten days before.
Yeah. So the eighteenth, no problem.
Yes.
So
And so tomorrow, if you want to uh you're arguing about what's abandoned.
Well, it's it's not, it's not relevant.
I should stop recording.
Yeah, that that would be good before I